Good evening and welcome to the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive or access via the live stream on the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. At this time, if you will join me, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Beal, welcome this evening. I will turn time over to you for roll call.
Okay. Mr. Snare.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Mr. Shannock.
Here.
Ms. Harder.
Here.
Mr. Supalack.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Mr. Weiss, excused.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. All right. At this time, it looks like we have documents and the meeting minutes from the September 1st meeting. I will entertain a motion to accept tonight's documents into the record and approve the minutes from September 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman.
Abstained.
Mr. Shannock?
Yes.
Ms. Harder?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plotting of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council receives a recommendation from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. There are no cases eligible for the consent agenda this evening. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. Anyone intending to address any of the administrative cases this evening, will you please stand, raise your right hand, and answer in the affirmative? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you. All right. Now, we have one tabled case this evening, so I'm trying to get my agenda in order. The table case this evening has been removed and postponed for a different day. Ms. Roush, do you have anything to add on the postponed case?
No, the applicant made the request to postpone that Thrive Cardinal South project, so if anybody's here for that, that case will not be heard this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. All right. So we do have cases two, three, and four, which will be heard together. Are these consent agenda? It is consent. Okay. So does anyone from the commission wish to pull these from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, including cases two, three, and four as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Snare. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Shannock?
Yes.
Ms. Harder?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Ms. Call. Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. All right. News case this evening is for Mount Carmel Hospital Northwest at 3865 Bright Road, 22-134 AFDP amended final development plan. This application is a request. Mr. Underhill? Thank you, and thank the rest of the applicant. I realize I was... Hey, I think it's a record, so next time, the six minutes is what we need to beat. Thank you all. All right. I apologize for the interruption and my miss there. So this application is a request for the development of 150,000-square-foot, 30-bed inpatient hospital on a 35-acre site, zoned planned unit development district, Mount Carmel Hospital Northwest. The site is located southeast of the roundabout of Bright Road and Emerald Parkway. Mr. Will is here this evening for our case presentation, so I will turn the time over to you.
Good afternoon and thank you. As you mentioned, the 38-5 acre site is located southeast of Emerald Parkway and Bright Road, northwest of the interchange of Sawmill Road and I-270. This is an amended final development plan application, which provides the opportunity for the applicant to propose changes to an approved final development plan. You'll remember, the staff report was quite thorough. This presentation is going to try to focus on what's changed and highlight what's changed, how the prior conditions of approval were addressed, and then the final recommendation from planning. So as the commission may recall, the previously approved final development plan shown here with the Phase 1 four-story hospital, 30 beds, and 153,000 square foot, two-story, 51,500 square foot attached medical office building, and 728 parking spaces, and a future phase as well. The proposed amended final development plan, the Phase 1, which we're looking at, is 150,000 square foot of development roughly, and that four-story hospital, this is excluding that fourth-story shell space, similar to the last time, with 424 parking spaces in this phase. So the kind of recapping some of the changes at a high level from the building area, a reduction from the final development plan, parking spaces, there are less spaces this time, the all phases included are more similar, the access points, there are four total, Emerald Parkway, a secondary entrance off of Bright Road, a servants' drive off of Emerald Parkway, and a restricted access off of Sawmill, and the proposed phasing, the restricted access is moved to a future phase. And the open spaces, there are roughly 6.9 acres of open space, including an east-west greenway, a staff green, and an oncology garden. And the proposed amended final development plan, the open space is about three acres in the new Phase 1, with a modified entry green and a reduced staff green. And we'll highlight these and walk through the changes through the presentation. So here, a side-by-side comparison, on the left is the approved final development plan, and on the right is this evening's proposed amended final development plan. So some of the main changes are, of course, the attached medical office building is proposed in a future phase. The restricted Sawmill access and circulation paths are also part of a future phase. The staff parking, which was located east of the hospital, is now being proposed west of the hospital, across from the campus drive. The green ribbon shown on the left was kind of more complete. The oncology garden, as mentioned, was moved to a later phase. The entry green on the west has been reduced, and the amenities that are within the open space, and then the staff green has been shrunken in size. So kind of zooming in, looking a little bit more at that green ribbon that was part of this development plan, you can see the walking paths and shared use path loop, and that wellness green has been removed. There is still some landscaping, but they have removed some of it. Additionally, there are some respite areas that were approved in that wellness green with the final development plan, which are not present in the proposed. Staff is conditioning that the applicant add back that walking shared use path loop element, add additional landscaping, and the respite areas. The staff green, which is on the east side of the hospital, the applicant is proposing to reduce the size in this Phase 1 of the staff green, so the outdoor seating is considerably reduced. Additionally, they're having or proposing a dry basin that's unlandscaped, so this would need to be landscaped. A proposed temporary or interim fire access is also part of the proposed amended final development plan. We'd want to see landscaping separating the seating and amenity area for the staff with that asphalt pavement, and that's also a condition. Moving to circulation, as mentioned, there are now three access points being proposed with the reduction of that Sawmill access. There was a traffic memo, which was an appendix to the transportation impact study that looked at those off-site improvements with this new phasing. The campus drive, the drive off of Bright Road, that shared use path meandered a little bit more through the woods. The applicant is now proposing to parallel the shared use path with that drive. There is now a Phase 1 alignment, kind of an interim piece between the piece of the shared use path along the drive and the connection to the hospital, which would be replaced with a permanent one in a later phase. The parking circulation has been changed. The applicant added in landscape parking islands following a condition of approval from the commission. This moves circulation through the parking lot in a more preferred fashion. And then additionally, that staff parking was moved, so that's also changed the circulation. Staff used to have a dedicated entrance right by the parking end of the building, and now have to cross over a campus drive and circulate a little bit further to either the emergency entrance or the main entrance. And here, looking a little bit closer at the parking here on the left, you can see the landscaped islands with the circulation paths guiding folks out of the vehicle into this greenway and into the hospital. With the amended final development plan, they are proposing 424 spaces. This is also indicative of the reduction of the square footage total. The future phases in total would be 891. This is reflective of the reduction of 52 parking spaces, which was a condition of approval So now shifting a little bit more to the landscape side of things, shown here is the proposed tree planting plan. On the right is the site plan. You'll see the little trees, the legend trees to the left. To the top of the page, there is a utility area. The applicant is proposing to screen that with replacement trees. We're conditioning that they use utility screening trees and not kind of double-dip into those replacement trees, so they need to provide the utility screening and additionally the replacement trees as well. You can see kind of where the north arrow is, there's a green circle. This is where they've done it previously, as staff preferred or staff recommended. Throughout the plan, there's kind of some inconsistencies between the landscape engineering and tables. Here, you can see the proposed trees on the site plan along Sawmill Road. However, they're not being accounted for in the table, so again, working with the applicant to update tables and plans to be consistent with one another. Along the highway perimeter buffer, the applicant is proposing to split trees from the Phase 1 and then a future phase. Staff is conditioning that they add all these trees in the Phase 1. Highlighted on the site plan is an area void of trees, which would be a great place to add trees to kind of complete that highway buffer. Additionally, a condition approval from before, the FFA areas, condition that the applicant work with staff to determine a tree species that would fit and still meet the FFA requirements. Now moving along to the signs, here is the proposed sign table. Additionally, kind of working with the applicant to provide consistency with the table in the site plan. For example, they're showing eight DRO directional signs in the table, but really, there are 12 shown on the site plan. Likewise, in the building signs, there are two when there should be one of the BEO signs. That second sign was part of the attached medical office building, which is no longer part of this phase. And then also the WL-03 wall sign, that's also part of the medical office building. And then updating the square footage calculation or size areas as needed. So shown here are the proposed ground signs for the new phasing. The two main entry signs, or the main entry sign along Emerald at the roundabout, future roundabout, and Bright Road, continue. No major changes to the signs. They have updated to provide dimensional letters, which was a condition of approval, similarly for this set of signs. And with regard to the building signs, again, no changes for these. These are the large buildings on top of the building, no change here. With the condition that they update the number of signs, again, the main interest for the hospital building, and they also had one for the medical office building, that need to be replayed or taken off of the table. They have updated these signs to fulfill the conditions of approval, other than we're still conditioning that raceways not be permitted in the use of the signs, and that the letters are individually pin-mounted. Now on to architecture. Shown here is the proposed Phase 1 north elevation. Now that the future or the attached medical office building is a future condition, this is an elevation that the commission has not seen before. It is at the knuckle of where the future or the attached medical office building would be in the future. This elevation is similar to what was shown in the future or the attached medical office building on the north elevation, so that is consistent. Another condition of approval from the commission was to update the connector or the knuckle to reduce the mass or break up the mass of the building and make that ground floor or those first two floors not read as one consistent brick piece. The applicant has proposed to update this with glass and stone, which meets the prior condition of approval. Another condition of approval was that the applicant update the service yard walls. The applicant has updated the walls highlighted in red with brick that matches the east and west elevations of the ER building. The ones highlighted in kind of the blue color or mix of stone, sorry, brick and metal, and that matches the north elevation of the ER building. An additional condition of approval was that the applicant update the brick parapet to provide a brick parapet, terminus of the riff line. They have added a brick parapet to meet this condition. So some of the final development plan prior conditions of approval, there were 44 conditions. Wanted to show how these 44 conditions were addressed. This was kind of the homework for the applicant. So of those 44, 18 conditions were met with this AFDP. Six conditions were applicable to this new phasing, and then three conditions were part of the infrastructure agreement, which are kind of self-fulfilling, so they still matter, but they're self-fulfilling. And then 17 conditions were included or rolled over into this amended final development plan. You'll see there's only 14 conditions. Some of these conditions have been combined or grouped if they are kind of related to one another. And then now moving to this final development, amended final development plan. Staff reviewed the plan against the criteria, and the development plan meets criteria with conditions. Planning is recommending approval with 14 conditions. To kind of summarize these, the first is to be consistent between the site plans, landscape engineering, and the tables. Second is to update it with a few site elements, bicycle parking, dimension signs, the steel pipe bollards, and lighting before going to building permits. That the applicant return to PCC for approval for future phases of the development. That the applicant coordinate site and off-site improvements regarding Emerald Parkway and other infrastructure pieces. And that the applicant refine the entry wellness greenway, the Phase 1 piece of it, to include that path loop, additional respite areas, and landscaping. Similarly, for the staff green, that the applicant work with staff to provide a more robust staff green. That the applicant revise tree survey and tree preservation plans to be consistent with one another and update as needed. That applicant update the quantities and sizes for these plants and ensure consistency before headed to building and permits. The applicant update the tree replacement plan to show the Bright Road utility area screening properly. That the species and mature height are compliant with the FFA regulation, that the applicant work with staff to identify that tree type to be used. That the 54 required highway perimeter trees be in Phase 1 completely, and that the heavy-duty pavement for the fire apparatus, the applicant did update this in their plan, but there are still pieces that need to be further added to this so that they meet this. As mentioned, that raceways be prohibited for building mounting signs, and then the applicant update the sign quantities and parameters table to accurately reflect the sign areas and quantities of Phase 1. So with that, thank you. I'm here to answer any questions. The applicant is also here in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Will. For this application, we're going to handle questions separately for staff and for the applicant. So looking to the commission for any questions that we have for staff at this time. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I think I understood that the other entrance won't be put in now, right? Is that correct?
Did you say entrance? Correct. The Sawmill access is deferred to a later phase.
It won't be put in now?
Not part of this Phase 1, which we're approving, which you are approving, or...
Okay. That's... Yeah, okay. I guess we'll discuss that. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
I just have a quick process question. Sorry, I can still say I'm newish. The... So when we have a case like this where the PDP is so much different than the FDP, is that... I mean, to me, this is very different than what we reviewed before. How does that factor into our... I guess it may be a question for the commission more than staff, but how does that factor into our review? Because it is quite a bit different.
So that's why we're definitely bringing it back, that this is some larger comprehensive changes that we'd like the commission's feedback on. There was some phasing elements that changed what the site looks like at Phase 1. Jenny?
If we could take one step back, so today, they have an approved final development plan, and they can go out and build that today. They are seeking substantial changes that now essentially reset, they want to offer something different, and so it's, we're seeing a final development plan, and we're looking at it through the lens of this is a new final development plan. It's amended substantially from the previous approval. Mr. Boggs, clarify or offer correction where needed?
No, that... You... I could not have stated it better myself, so...
Perfect. And then, sorry, the quick follow-up question to that would be, when we talk about the future, or Phase 2, I guess we'll call it, we're not concerned with Phase 2 today, so questions we have about Phase 2 would be another time and place, right? So we have to prove this based on what we're seeing here, not what could or could not be happening in Phase 2. Is that...
That... Right. That is correct. So one of your criteria for approval of a final development plan, where there is phasing, is that each phase has to be able to satisfy all of your criteria of final development plan approval independently. So, yeah, one element or one criteria of final development plan approval can't be deferred to a future phase. Each has to stand on its own under the criteria.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for that.
Ms. Harder?
I just had a question about the emergency entrance. Is that something that people could mistakenly come through? Has that been changed at all, and any concern about that?
So now that the emergency drive isn't connecting to Sawmill, there had been a prior condition of approval that emergency only be added to one of the signs. That was not added as part of this, and staff felt that with that connection not being made to Sawmill, that that wasn't needed as a cut, or it wouldn't be used as a cut through at this point, so deferring that to a later phase.
Other questions for staff? I just have one on circulation on the property. So looking at this drawing. Has there been any concern or any discussion with emergency services with the essentially dead end here and turnaround?
So fire had reviewed, and with that kind of hammerhead over there, that that would be able to accommodate their turning movements, and that was shown through their auto-turn results, too.
And that's for all apparatus, including their ladder truck required for the four-story building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions for staff? Seeing none, welcome. So if you have a presentation, we'd like to invite you up to the microphone for either a presentation or a statement this evening, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Diane Undesett, 16171 Lewis Road, Sunbury, Ohio. Thank you for hearing us tonight. First, before I start, I want to thank each and every one of you. It's been a long year, this last year, and we've been before you a few times, and you've really helped us with your creativity and adding what you believe and what we believe will be the best product for the east side of Dublin. We're very committed to this product. As you know, we own other property in the Dublin community. We could have built there, but we really believe that the east side of Dublin deserves access to high-quality care, and that's why we're so committed to this project. And if you look at the drawings, you'll see we tried to keep whole the hospital, the emergency room, the procedure areas, the operating rooms, the diagnostic areas. You know, why we are here tonight is we are faced with challenges when we looked at the project, looked at everything that we have. We are faced with challenges like everyone else is with the country. First, hospitals are not immune to inflation. Our labor costs have gone up, our supplies have gone up. And then you come to construction cost. We're very lucky in central Ohio to have so much building. It's great for our economy. But when you're on the builder's side, the construction costs have skyrocketed, and we're competing against very large projects. And then third, to develop a site, there's a lot, because we see the future of this. We see Phase 2, but we have to develop the infrastructure, the roads, the storm sewers, you know, everything that goes around it, the landscaping and the hardscaping. We have to put all of that into Phase 1. So that is why we're here tonight. But we are committed to serving the east side of Dublin. We believe it's the right thing to do for the community. We want to be part of the community. So now I'd like to turn it over to our HGA partners, just to share with you a little bit about the design, so you can see how we did do everything we can to keep the hospital whole. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Scandley from HGA. My address is 9322 Sickney Avenue, Wauwatosa, Wisconsin, 53226. Well, thank you for having us. You know, as I was talking, or as I was listening to Chris give the explanation on what has changed on the project, there's a lot of detail that he went through. It reminded me that I really wanted to start off by saying, really, the mission and really the design work of this master plan really has not changed, and really, the vision of this, you know, property being really focused about around health and wellness, and that... So the character of the master plan is certainly still intact. While some of the components have adjusted, I believe that the ultimate vision will play out as we presented it in previous meetings. There are three, actually, I'll correct myself, there's two public entries to the site, like before, Emerald Parkway being the main entrance, a secondary entrance off of Bright Road for public entry to the site. We've always been dedicated to separating ambulance and service traffic from public traffic, and that's where we've incorporated that service drive to the south. It does not extend all the way through to Sawmill, like Chris stated. And so, but it certainly does provide direct access for ambulance and trucks to both the ED department, as well as to loading and the utility yard. The other thing that the commission really challenged us last time, if you could go back one slide, was the incorporation of some of the pedestrian walkways within the larger parking areas. And so I want to spend a little bit of time just describing how we've incorporated some of that feedback to create a better patient experience, both from the parking area all the way to the front door. You've seen this view before, and I think it's a real, really good view that describes the... You've seen this view before, and I think it's a real, really good view that describes some of that, some of the parking areas, and, and the incorporation of the pedestrian walkways to help, number one, reduce the scale of some of those larger parking areas. But then also thinking about the patient experience as a pathway that kind of cuts through those larger areas, allowing patients to move through the parking areas in a very protected way, very safe way. And it really connects to that greenway that I think everyone can see as being a really beautiful place as they walk to the front door. Next slide. As we kind of move down to the ground level, this is coming off of Emerald Parkway, as we, as we move through the main entry drive to the Ring Road, really, the identity of the hospital remains intact. Really, the, the main focal point of the hospital is really to, to highlight the chapel as being the, the very prominent focal point, is the central organizing element to the campus and to the building. When we remove the medical office building to the left of the plan, the knuckle building, or the knuckle part of the building that Chris described, which really previously was somewhat this in-between zone between the hospital and the medical office building, now becomes a little bit more significant in the building composition. What we've done to basically designed the kind of north end of the building was to use the, the design vocabulary of the brick base of the hospital, and expresses now the knuckle as a two-story brick expression. Next slide. From I-270, really, this view remains unchanged. This end of the building is still highly visible from I-270. It's a four-story element that really will be at the gateway to Dublin off of I-270. The medical office building, much further along the north, was, has never been visible from I-270. And certainly, as that comes on in future phases, it'll seamlessly integrate with the building massing. The Sawmill elevation, there's a lot of discussion last time about the, the design vocabulary of, of this elevation. And some of the feedback that we kind of went back to the drawing board on was breaking down the scale of the, kind of the horizontal expression, as Chris noted, and thinking about the knuckle as almost a separate element that could be expressed in a different way than the, using the brick language from the medical office building or from the hospital. It's a much more significant expression from Sawmill. I would say that it has a appearance of a, of a front primary elevation. And I think we're, we're excited about how, when the medical office building does come online in a phase two, the buildings will seamlessly integrate together. The knuckle does basically represent the function, the function of the hospital, which is the major circulation artery. And so as the medical office building comes on in future phases, that really will be that kind of gasket or that relief between the two building masses. Moving in a little bit closer to this end of the building, we wanted to kind of highlight some of the changes around the future staff entry, and how we've really thought about creating more of a landmark that can be seen from a distance. What we've done is we've incorporated some of the language of the stone along the, the base of the building into the entry, and created a two-story visual marker that could be seen from a distance. This space here really is kind of that outdoor amenity for staff to use throughout the day. So there is some seating area and a, a place to, to come out throughout the day. As the campus grows, certainly, this area will, will grow and evolve along with it. This view does also highlight the brick parapet that we addressed as a condition of approval. We, we added a brick parapet above the windows to help resolve and terminate the roof line, and to create a little bit more of a finished look across all of the windows within the brick facade. And then lastly, coming to the Bright Road view, this is definitely a much more park-like setting as patients come into the hospital campus. With the removal of the medical office building, the building is a little bit further back. There is a little bit more of a green kind of meadow or open area. But I think the idea of kind of the resolution and the knuckle completing the building composition can really be seen here. And this is also the, the side view of the chapel, certainly, as that central focal element can be seen from the Bright Road. If there are any questions, we will certainly answer them for you. Thank you for your time.
Looking to the commission for questions for the applicant. Mr. Sublack?
Ms. DuSette, this might be more oriented towards you than, than Mr. Scanley. Question on, obviously, we've been working together collectively on something, right? This is short of what we've been working on, but there is forethought about phasing. Perhaps it's the big sort of elephant in the room on that is, and again, it's, it's a moving target, I'm sure. But at least from your vantage point, what is the plan around phasing? What is the potential timeline around phasing? What's the horizon you're potentially looking at for future phases?
Can you hear me okay? Sorry. I just saw the green light. As we grow, as we see the success of this campus, we will want to bring more physicians on site for the city. We do have primary care offices within the, within the area. So right now, our plan was to locate them and move them closer to the hospital. So that will be our plan as we grow. As far as a timeline, can I tell you it will start construction two years after we open? I, I, I wish I could tell you, but I'm trying to be very honest with you. But we are committed to add that, because in that medical office building, the oncology services, that's, as a registered nurse, those services, we want to bring that service to the community. We want to bring the lower community center to the community. But when we had to make the tough decisions of what would stay in phase one and what wouldn't in phase one, we really looked at the hospital, the emergency room, the cath labs, you know, those are emergency services that we need to provide to East Dublin. So the logical for us was to say, let's move off the physician offices and the oncology infusion at this time, so we don't have to cut services within the hospital. That was really important to us. I'm sorry, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Harder.
On that note, may I ask also, when I look around at all the other Mount Carmel hospitals and so forth, one, you also have the physician's offices and the hospital together, and you've been doing that from, for years and years in this community. And so when, when we see just the hospital coming, it is a worry about, about that physician hospital, or, excuse me, offices component. So that timeline is very, very important. But it's a, it's a model you've had from, from, for years and years. So, so is that a concern? I mean, that seems to be something that is a big piece that would be missing.
Right now, with the challenge that we have, trying to build what we need, we had to put something into phase two. I, as a nurse, I don't feel it is a concern, because we, our medical staff is committed to come here. Our medical staff located in the northwest quadrant is committed to come here. You, you think about it, even though the patient is seeing the patient maybe in the Dublin area, they would still come to us for their surgical procedure. So it is the physicians that would move to that, you know, have to go to the two different locations and not have the, you know, the luxury to walk right across the hall. But we're fully committed to do that. Just right now, with the challenges of the skyrocketing construction cost, we can't do everything at once. We'd have to cut beds maybe down to 10. Or, and see, we didn't want to do that. We want to be able to serve the community. And if we have to, we'll walk. The healthcare providers will drive from their Dublin office to there. But we are committed.
Mr. Schneer.
I don't understand the question. I apologize.
So to restate, on tonight's AFTP, we have a recommendation from planning staff for approval with 14 conditions. And so, Mr. Schneer, if I could restate, and please correct me if I am not correct, are you accepting of the 14 conditions as presented in the staff report this evening?
Right. And we are, we would accept, we're willing to accept all 14 of them. We would like to reexamine some of the language on item number three, to, to focus on future phases being allowed to come to, come back to planning and zoning for site development, but that the architecture that's been approved from last time for the medical office building not have to be, not to come back to planning and zoning for approval. That's the only thing that I would like to have some discussion on, the language of number three.
First, I want to say thank you. I mean, we, we left here, our last meeting with 44 conditions, that I'm sure was very daunting and challenging for you all. So I think you've done a great job of coming back. We appreciate you guys coming back to us with this proposal. So I just wanted to share my opinion on that. I mean, again, it was a huge task, and I think you guys did a great job accommodating most everything that we asked you for. I just have one very quick question. You've lost, I mean, a little bit of characters lost, obviously, without the, the, the size of the, the prior, prior plan approval. When we talk about like the, that nice green space you had right in front there, and some of those amenities that were, again, part of that character of the, of the area, would you be willing to add more of that back in, is one question. The second question is, you've got a lot of green space here. What's the, I guess, can you share some of your thoughts? Is it just going to be well-maintained grass? Is it going to be, sorry, left to field? Or what, what, what's your vision for what that green space will be in maintaining that green space?
Hi, Mike Davis. Address is 709 Crosby Street, Akron, Ohio, as it codes 44302. So within that open space that's represented as green lawn, so that would be, in the near term, it would be no mowed meadow. So you're looking at like a lawn that's four to six inches tall. So that would be left somewhat naturalized. There would be a mown edge along the roads, where we have the street trees. And then in along the green spaces, along the wellness green that comes in the campus near the chapel there, the walkway would come back in there. So we do have that amenity and some additional landscaping with that, with that walk coming back in, that would be included in that. And then to the condition regarding the staff, staff terrace, you know, we, we don't have staff coming in off the east side now, but we have that fire lane there. But we understand that we could have some additional landscaping there as well for that, for that piece within that. So does that help?
Yeah, thank you. So, sorry, you said for the gra, the green space, you said no, no mowed meadow?
No, no mo, no mo.
You're gonna let it, let it go?
Short, shorter species grass, more drop tolerant than your typical lawn would be. That's, so, until that goes in there, that would be a no, a no mowed meadow mix. So kind of a softer, natural texture throughout there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Just one from me, oh, and actually, two. In previous discussions, there has been communication about staff and the criticality of having them, their parking closer to the building. In this new application, it does look like their parking is pretty much the furthest away from the building in phase one. Can you speak to how that decision was made, and if there were some additional thoughts in the earlier statements of how important it was to have that close to the building?
Yeah, so in the, in the prior plan, we did have parking on the east side of campus. Now, where the medical office building lot is there to the northwest, there was additional staff parking within that lot. So there was a slight division of, of that, that, that parking need. Now, in this phase, since we don't have the Sawmill access point there, emergency services that may need to access that parking lot and security reasons, you know, having that kind of back there, currently, the only option to get there is through that emergency access drive, and we want to keep that clear and open and not have traffic for those services there. But that, that allows staff to come in off the main entry and, and the Bright Road within that piece. And that parking lot that's there was existing with a future medical office building on the north side of that lot. So it's not something that wouldn't be there, but it allows us to kind of keep that whole kind of campus feel together, you know, and not have, have these pieces separated too far from each other.
And then, one follow-up and one unrelated question. So with the alignment, in my very precise, you know, putting a paper on top of the other and then tracing the building between, is the MOB building that is attached to the hospital, is that perceived in phase two to be at the same size, the same, that, you know, there was a discussion earlier about perhaps not coming back to planning and zoning commission for architectural details? It does look like that maybe a corner would go over the wellness path? And so just want to understand.
Yeah, the intent, the intent is have the medical office building be identical to what was shown in the previous meeting. And so we actually kind of, you know, sliced or removed the MOB right at that knuckle where the medical office building attached to the hospital. So really, there was no geometric change to the, to the plan.
But with relation to the wellness path, the wellness path appears to have changed shape. Where, whereas before, it kind of meandered, now it looks like the corner of the building sits over the top of the wellness path?
That's correct. In order to kind of keep that community connection into campus, from, from that kind of loop drive that comes down from Bright Road to that MOB, we have a temporary path in there. And so then we would have a permanent path installed with that, that MOB, once that gets built. So that's a temporary connection to come across that lawn.
Can you clarify temporary connection, same material, just temporary alignment, or a temporary connection in that it's substantially different than the permanent solution?
The permanent solution would come, you know, along, through the parking, along the front of the hospital into that green. And so that would be a whole kind of slightly different modified path.
But slightly different modified alignment, or slightly different modified construction?
It would be the alignment that's in the previous plan.
Material.
Material, material, we could say is the same.
The path would get replaced?
Yes. That's what I was looking, the, the temporary path makes me very nervous. Temporary paths are usually non-permanent material. So, and then final question for you, on the Sawmill Road side of the, the parcel, you know, we're looking at this holistically, and we understand that cost implications made you look at the project creatively. And how could you get something built while not getting everything built? That Sawmill section is incredibly important for connectivity purposes. So was there any discussion in improving at least pedestrian connectivity while not vehicular transportation in that area? We have the berm that I think goes to eight feet, but kind of oscillates along there. Was there any discussion of pedestrian connectivity on that?
We did. We discussed that at length. So we looked for the bus stop. And the bus stop today is north of Bright Road on that side, because, and that was the, so we knew we wanted to continue the Bright Road and the Bright Road walking path, because I believe a colleague or a patient would get off the bus, go up Bright, and then down. They wouldn't travel down Sawmill across. So, but we did look at that, and we felt the, the development of the Bright Road and the path would be the closest for the bus stop.
Thank you. Any final questions from the commission for staff or the applicant? Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I, I guess I hate to beat the drum again, but
Yeah, I guess I hate to beat the drum again, but I have a real worry about the Sawmill Road exit being eliminated now. Nothing's certain in the future, and we assume you're going to build the office building. But maybe something will happen that, and we've had this before with, with hospitals and office buildings where you sell that off to somebody to build a medical building, okay? And then they come in, they say, this is a hardship to be able to build this road off of Sawmill that should have been built with the hospital. And that's a real concern. And, and I don't know how we can make that better. I mean, you can maybe guarantee that if, if, if you sell the land off, you can rebuild the access. I don't know. But I, 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 I think I would hate to see this piece developed without Sawmill, the Sawmill Road entrance. And it's, it's very possible. Nobody knows what's going to happen in the future. And, you know, I'm thrilled with the hospital. I'm, I, I think the four conditions are fair. But I, I, I have a real concern about the entrance. And I think that I also have a concern about that short grass pathway. I'm, I've had some experience with that, that no mow grass. I think it'll be very important to keep that looking, that area looking pristine. And I would suggest putting the landscaping in and so on. If you feel you're going to, you're going to do something, something's going to happen in that piece of property, whether you build it five years from now, 10 years from now, or two years from now. And so I would like to see that landscape like the original plan, and I would like to see that road go in. I don't know if my other colleagues would support that, but I, I think that's a real worry for me.
Mr. Suplak, did you have a question?
Actually, I had a question for staff. So we are here, we had previously worked towards and approved a final development plan. Said final development plan had, well, we, we had previously approved the final development plan, right? There are reasons the applicant has to potentially walk back some of the impending near-term construction. Thus, we're looking for phasing. But in the process, right, in the process of potentially approving an amended final development plan, we're sort of vacating what we previously approved for the remainder of this in hopes that it manifests again. My question is around phasing. Phasing can still be done relative to, so this body is one part of the coin in the larger scheme of things. The building permit and the continuation of said building permits is the other part of the coin, right? Phasing can ostensibly come into play following a final development plan and be associated somehow with the construction and the, the building permit, if you follow me, right? And then, as I understand it, and I'm, I'm asking as much as anything else, anything else. So we're, if we're, what we're doing is buying time, right? If the applicant is committed, but we're buying time on, right, financial outlays, is there a way, and I'm necessarily advocating for it yet, is there a way to do it, leave the, the final development plan, do it, do the phasing via building permit? Allow some, there are extensions, as I understand it, that can be granted relative to building permits. Am I, am I correct? Or what, what, what nuance there do we have to unpack more fully?
I was waiting for you to get to the, to the question part. Okay. So I, I think that the challenge with proceeding along that route is that there is an expiration date for the approval of a final development plan before construction and building permits are obtained. That expiration period is 24 months. But it, we'd have, I would have to double check what that expiration period is. But it is, I think, it is a finite period of time. And so I believe that that is what the challenge was with having, maintaining the currently approved final development plan and simply just staggering out the procurement of building permits over an extended, you know, two to five year period.
So if, if I understand correctly, there's a, there's a finite amount of time between our final development plan and building permit, submission for building permit. So the clock has started based on the previous, for the previous final development plan. They have two years to submit for a building permit. Break, break ground subsequent, subsequent to that. That said, said building permit can still have a phase one and phase two, and the construction duration also buys more time. And, and/or there are extensions that can be applied for relative to building, building permits.
There, so I'm not intimately familiar with commercial building code that, or the Ohio building code that would govern the duration of building permits. But it is my understanding that they too have to be closed out in a period of time. And while there is the ability to apply for extensions, I do not know that that is unlimited or indefinite.
Can I ask that, that question a different way? You can't unring the bell. However, are we to take this applicant? And there's, there's no way to commit the applicant to future development. You can't condition this on any specific future development. That's, that's rhetorical question or not. So are, are we looking at this, should we be looking at this application more or less as, as case of first impression? Is this, is this the right design use, et cetera, for this parcel irrespective of anything that was approved in the past? Is that the purview that we should follow? Or is, or is that subjective?
It would be, I mean, the approval of this amended final development plan would replace the currently approved final development plan. And there is not a way to, there's not a, a hook in our code or in really a practical condition to require that the second phase or subsequent phases ever be completed.
So we should dis, I mean,
So.
We should pretty much disregard everything that has been approved?
I would asterisk that. Preliminary development plan. This is normal for us to see changes, modifications between a preliminary and a final. So if we could strike the word amended final development, from the final development plan, we're looking at a final development plan. And just like any other applicant that would come before us as the planning and zoning commission, they are saying, we, we've seen parcels recently where they say, hey, we're going to do the back half of the parcel lately, later. Just like any of those applications, we are looking at an overall plan that says, we're going to do the back half later. And we have to judge that based on our experience where the planning and zoning commission, we look at things with a long-term lens. And so we are looking at something, understanding that never could never come. So that parcel, we need to look at this and say, is this acceptable? Or how do we get it acceptable in order for this plan to be executed? Understanding that it may come later where we build a medical office building, where we build multiple medical office buildings as we saw in the first plan. But we need to make sure that this stands on its own two feet.
We're saying the same thing. We have to look at this application.
Right, right. Yeah, you're looking at the application in front of you because if it is approved, then the previous one is null.
Mr. Suplak.
Well, to wit, to wit, if what we're trying to buy, right, if the applicant is trying to buy time, and I'm, again, forgive me for unpacking this, I'm not advocating for this route yet. But I was trying to understand what, if we stuck with the FDP, what, what does that timeline actually look like? How much time do they potentially buy, right? So there is, there is a finite amount of time between our, the stamp we previously put on it, and they have to submit for building permit relative to what we approved. That's 24 months. There, they would, they would try to expedite and go faster than that. That said, this is a big hospital. This is a big site. So as long as you are under construction, your permit is active. You do not have a finite amount of time. As long as you continue to pull, pull inspections on a regular basis, right? There's, there's a certain duration there.
So, so, so long as you're under construction, your permit is active is not an accurate statement?
To the point of inspections are the, are the sort of trigger points provided. There's, there's stipulations around that that I think we need to understand because the, the construction duration buys them time as well. And then there is, there is a permit extension if they have sat dormant for, for too long to revisit. In which case, in which case, if that, if that, if that buoys up to 10 years, right? I don't know what the timeline is. If it buoys, if it buoys to 24 months.
Yeah. If I could, if I could kind of reel us back in a little bit, if I could reel us back in just a little bit, what we're looking at is an executable plan, and they're going to execute according to this plan. They could come back and say, hey, we have a different plan we'd like to execute. But this amended final development plan that we're asked to approve would then hold permits, and they would build according to this plan. Whether that's the original standing plan that's already gotten approval so that they could go start that process today or this plan in front of us, I don't think we have the option of the hybrid. So let's grant the previous and then execute on the previous and then, you know, grant certificate of occupancy after that concludes, but still have the phase two plan as the adopted approved plan. I don't think that exists.
I don't think it, I don't think it exists either. We're basically saying there's potential to stick with, if, if the intent of this plan that we're seeing tonight is to buy time, buy, buy time and defer, defer cost pace financials, there is a way to do that with the previous version. That's, that's all I'm getting at. And I'm trying to understand the nuance there. Not, not advocating, right? Not, not advocating, right?
Yeah. And if you could, Mike, rip them.
Ms. Call's clarification was excellent. Basically, when I looked at it earlier today, I looked at it and said, would I approve this plan without the buildings, okay? And, and without the entrance to Sawmill Road, okay? My answer was no. I think Sawmill Road is incredibly important, whether they build the other building or not. So that's the only.
And I do want to clarify, we're still in question period. So we're not in deliberation.
Okay, I won't deliberate, but okay. But what, I think your clarification was good. We've got to look at this plan as if it's, it's, we're approving it today. And we're approving it without the buildings. And if the buildings come, fine. If they don't come, fine too, okay? And therefore, we'd want, those things we talked about, the landscaping and finishing off the rest of the site, those would all be important if we were approving this for the first final developments today. So I think that that's, we can get all hung up on when they're going to build it and if they build it. And, and, and they might decide not to build it. They might decide to build a completely different plan. Who knows, okay? But I think that, that you're, I, I go with your clarification. I think that we look at it, we say, well, we, would, if this was, we'll ask three weeks ago or whatever, would, would we approve it like this without the building?
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
And Ms. Call, if I may clarify or correct my previous statement, the expiration period I was thinking of may, I believe, is for applications under the Bridge Street code. There is not an expiration period for final development plans under our planned district code, which is what this falls under. So that final development plan is good indefinitely, as this one would be if it is approved. Now, the caveat I would give along with Mr. Suplak's line of thinking is that if this were to be built in stages under the existing final development plan, and for example, it was just to be the hospital built first, well, there is not an approved final development plan that contemplates the hospital without the medical office building. So they would not be able to get a building permit just for the hospital under their existing approved plan.
Agreed, which is, but you can submit for phased permits. So they can, when they do the construction drawings, they can have phase one and phase two, all under a, a single permit. To wit, the, the construction duration of the first phase keeps their inspections going, keeps their, their permit live. Then they eventually start phase two, which keeps their, their permit live. And in between, they potentially can extend if they've, if they've gone dormant, too long dormant between inspections. It's the inspection process that I think keeps a permit. Because, you know, every, their, construction projects don't have a finite timeline because they could be, they could be two weeks, they could be years of development. And that, that's how that, it keeps the permit live. So that, that's where I was going. They could do it under a phase of the building, the building permit and phase one, phase two, and then buy themselves time potentially.
But there, but there is like, there's not an exterior treatment of that wall for the medical office building, for example.
So to restate, we would have to have a, a third final development plan that contemplates the phasing. We have one and two, we don't have three. We would have to have an amended final development plan that had phase one, phase two, that had a treatment of the side of the building and had the extension of the MOB in a phase one, phase two contemplated plan.
I don't know that I, I don't know that I agree. Ultimately, they have approval to proceed the way I'm speaking. The only, the only caveat is the, the wall, the incomplete wall.
Okay. I'll follow you with your comment. Like, that's not really what they're, I think we need to be fair to the applicant because that's really not what the applicant, unless I'm wrong.
Understood. And I'm not, I'm not advocating. I'm, I'm trying to understand it relative to the intent of the, the intent of the application we're seeing in context to the, the previous applications we've seen.
And I would like to seek staff's clarification on the FDP versus the AFDP and the side of the wall today, under either of these plans, could they phase permit construction? Could they pull a building permit to, to build a phased construction of that hospital building?
Good evening. So I think the question on that is, from a staff standpoint, I think at least zoning would have a hard time approving a permit that's not conforming to the approved final development plan. I think that's where we would have a challenge because we'd be looking at a, a permit that doesn't show what the approved final development plan had shown.
Because phasing, from a building perspective, how, again, my understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, in our mind is we have phased site improvements versus building improvements. It's not sections of the building that has been approved, if I'm understanding how our process is typically.
Well, I guess I'm going to, and Jamie can attest to this. Construction, architecture can be done as you draw the entirety of the building. Then you denote phase one, right, and, and certain notes about phase one, and then denote phase two. It's all under one building permit, and the phasing is included in said, said building permit. So ostensibly, it would come into, it could, can't, potentially come into the building permit in alignment with the FDP that we've already seen, just with some notation about phasing, which is inevitable in every construction project.
Yeah. So, so I think what you're suggesting potentially is they would submit a site building permit that shows everything that would conform to the, the approved final development plan. But then out in the field, they would only be building what they're effectively proposing tonight. I think the challenge would be on the back end of that, from an inspection, occupancy standpoint, we're looking at an approved set of plans that shows the site fully built out. But we're looking out in the field and there's a component of that built, but not everything. So I think from a inspection, sign-off, occupancy, I don't know if we can grant that because it's not conforming to the approved set of plans for their permit.
Yeah, I don't think staff has the option. If we don't, we, if we don't in the final development plan, give them the option, and neither of these plans contemplates.
I guess I, I, again, I'm going to say I disagree. I've done it, right? I've stamped drawings just, just like this. And again, it's gone through zoning for, for approval. It's gone to building permit and, because there's reasons you do, you do phasing relative to operate, current operations. To it, it, it can be done, right? And partial occupancy here, partial occupancy there relative to that entire commentary. The building department still gets to review it, right, for all of those things. And there's, there's rules and stipulations around it. But again, I don't, I don't need to belabor this anymore than we, we already have. I appreciate everyone's. I appreciate everyone's, everyone's time and being along for the ride.
Hi, Aaron Green, six five, home address, seven five two two Lawton Street, Galeno, Ohio, four three oh two one. I'm Aaron Green. I'm the owners representative with HPL Solutions and thank you for the time. And I was just going to comment to Mr. Suplack, but if we went back to the original final development plan that went in August, you can see that we've met all those conditions. And if there was an opportunity to phase that final development plan in, we're all for it. The only reason we're here is because of cost. So we're all for the ingress egress, but by reducing the building and reducing the program, we've reduced traffic counts, we've reduced ingress to that site. So that's the reason why we disbanded Somo. We want to build all this. It's just a cost factor today. So if there was an, if there was a way to do an approved phase of that site plan that was approved in August, with all the conditions that we've already satisfied tonight, we're all for it.
Thank you for that clarification. So as the Planning and Zoning Commission and to Mr. Supalak's point, I think there is a way to do it. I just don't think we have it yet. We have an amended final development plan that has a contemplated shrunken scope. We have the approved development plan that has the broad scope. We don't have the hybrid plan. So I'd like to ask the applicant, we have not yet gone into deliberation, but you've kind of heard a little bit of the commission discussion this evening. So we have a few options here. Tonight, we have an AFDP in front of us that is looking at that essentially what would be phase one. We can proceed tonight in discussion of phase one and see what it would take to get phase one so that you could get an approval tonight. Plan B, you could take the original final development plan that is approved and you could pull permits tomorrow for it after going through the proper process. Or option C, we could, as discussion has permitted tonight, we could part ways, you could go back and work with staff on a second amended final development plan that does have phasing contemplated in it that matches the original final development plan after discussion. So I'd like to turn time over to you. I see that, again, we haven't even entered into deliberation, so there's more discussion this evening, but I'd like to present those three options.
Hi, Lorraine Lawton, eight oh seven City Park, Columbus, four three two oh six. Hi, thank you again for your time tonight. I'm the CEO at Mount Carmel. I think one way to, to go through this is that condition that was added, I want to say it was number three, that we would have to come back for the second phase. If we could just amend that language to say, unless it is identical to the plan that was approved in August with all those 44 conditions. If we could approve tonight or at least get your, your opinion tonight and then have that condition be written in a way with our attorneys and mutual staff agreement about, we wouldn't have to come back with, if it's identical to the plan that was approved in August. One of the things that provides us is certainty in terms of how we, what the cost is going to be in the future. So we can scope fate the second phase without having to think, okay, what other conditions are going to be added? What else is going to happen in the future when we, when we are ready for phase two? As Ian said, we want to build the entire campus as approved in August. It's not, it's not a good steward of resources right now to do that. So we're, I would propose that as an alternative that sort of allows us the certainty of what it would look like and also hopefully offers you hope that we really are committed to doing that ultimate plan with that certainty. That I'm not sure how we're going to do a phase one and phase two. I just don't know if that's something that staff or we have a path forward and we don't want to delay this so that we try to start construction in the winter. It's going to just add, any delay we have is now going to just add cost.
Thank you, thank you. So what I'm hearing is essentially we're going to proceed with tonight's meeting with the AFDP as presented tonight for deliberation for discussion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Final questions for staff or the applicant? Is there anyone from the public here for public comment on this item? Have we received any public comment during the meeting? All right, with that said, I'm going to close the, the question and answer period of the meeting and we'll open deliberations. And Mr. Schneer, if I could start with you this evening.
Drawn narrowly, I don't see the commitment would not appear to be valid. We could say we approved the entire application that's here, but that doesn't carry the commitment to ever proceed with the additional phasing. So also saying the same thing, we're asked to approve the application, why just look at the application and pretend it isn't a phase. Unfortunately, we don't have very good time to say I support that application, but I don't need it. It makes the best use of that. Again, it may not be valid. If we were, if this was an admission, I mean, there's an application to build something on this parcel. These are evidence, etc. It's really going to bring a lot of, maybe not all the grants.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Ms. Harder.
Thank you. And thank you for coming again. Mount Carmel is very important to this community and probably everyone here has had some kind of interaction with them and positive interaction and it's a great opportunity for this area and we thank you for keep coming back and, and so forth. But I have to say that I, I really like the history that you have of combining the hospital and so forth. And I hear you want to do that, but I don't see it here today and I have to look at what is here today. And I think about the people on the east side of this area and I want the best for them too. And so with that missing, I, I have to, I, I'm not very comfortable with it. Also, losing the access of people getting to the hospital from Sawmill Road, I think about timing, I think about ambulances, I think about making sure that people have the best care to get there the quickest that they can and taking that access away could be difficult. So I, again, I want you all to come back. I wanted all this to work out, but today, this, what I'm seeing today is not what I think is of best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. Mr. Fishman.
My colleague said it best be bilateral. I, I really appreciate your situation. A lot of people are going through it and, but I, I think that if we'd approved this as just a hospital earlier, we wouldn't have approved it that way. You certainly wouldn't have eliminated Sawmill Road. I, I think that is critical. We also would have expected something else to be like, or my colleague so aptly said, a hospital with, with a bunch of no mow grass around it. I think that, that at, at best, we put the Sawmill Road exit in because I think that, that, that we had this, a room full of neighbors and, and, and they, they were all concerned about everything going down Bright Road, but I think their fears were eased by the fact that, I mean, by down Bright Road. And I think their fears were eased by having a Sawmill Road exit and entrance. I, I also think that, that it, it makes sense and that's a small part of the project. I, I don't know what it is, but you would know better that we do the approved landscaping, we, we put the, the roads in and, and if you want to develop it 15 years from now, that's fine, as long as you commit to maintain that, that, that property. Or if you sell it off, the, the next person has to abide by the plan or come back to us. I think that, that, that's only fair in both directions. We all worked hard on this and we all want Mount Carmel to be here. And so I, I just think that we're making a big mistake if we, if we build that hospital without an exit of Sawmill Road and leave a bunch of land around it, which has happened before. We've had strip centers go in, they said, oh yeah, we're going to expand and there's, you know, it, it's surrounded by a weeded field. So, or, or I, I haven't heard about the no grow grass before, but, but, I mean, it's slow grow grass, but I, I just, I, I just couldn't vote for it if, if we didn't abide to the original plan. And I understand phasing, phasing's fine. And first phase includes the access to the hospital, okay? So that's my feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Chinok.
I, I guess I hope you all feel our, our dilemma because it is, it is tough and I think we all feel compelled to, you know, move forward because you've worked so hard and you've come back many times. And again, you've, you've met a lot of the requirements that we've asked you to do, but I think the challenge is why we can't get away from looking at the, the bigger development as much as we're supposed to. It's really hard to look at this in a silo because it, like everybody's saying, it, it doesn't work in a silo. I mean, we've got the views from Sawmill, you've got this field of grass. And again, I hate to get hung up on no mow grass, but we've all seen undeveloped grass and maintaining it, and I think it's going to look like a half of a developed site. And if you guys, you know, come back, like we said, in 10 years, 15 years, it's going to sit there for a while. And I just, I, I think that's the, the level of discomfort that we have. But again, me personally, I, I, I feel for you all. I appreciate everything you guys have done because it is, it's a, it's a beautiful building and you've done a lot of great things with the, the site that we're looking at here. But it's just really hard to get past, for me, looking at a, essentially half a development in such a prominent part of, of Dublin.
Thank you, Mr. Chinok. Mr. Supalak.
So I'm going to echo a, a number of my commissioners. This, this site, right, there was a good bit of development here that was, that was very compelling. And that compelling, the compellingness of it, I guess, got us past the community plan for this parcel, right? It was a rich development, was a rich development, a small portion unfinished and awaiting future attention. The mix was largely completed with a small portion incomplete that was, that seemed by that point largely predetermined, if not complementary to the, to the whole. And of course, now, relative to this, it's about half, the site's about half complete. Certain, certain corners were cut that are trying to be, get repicked up relative to the conditions. And a wealth of the critical elements that I think really drove us down this path are now sort of seemingly absent, right? With limited assurances that the rest of it will potentially come to fruition. So there's, I, I think the discomfort here is I too would not be supportive had this come in preliminary, preliminary development plan. I, I would not have been supportive as it stands. And thus, and forgive me for going a little bit off, off topic, but I was trying to find a way where we could marry somewhere in the middle and find the track that bought you the time to, to make the financial commitments, but defer them out into the future relative to the final development plan we have, we have currently have in place together. So I, I too, unfortunately, as it stands, I am not especially supportive of the amended final development plan as it's drawn.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. I don't want to dismiss the fact that we've come a, a long way. Of the 44 conditions, as I see them from the last time that you were before this body, 18 of them have been met. We still have conditions on this AFDP that kind of make up the difference and you're accepting of all of them. So that to me shows a spirit of partnership and a commitment to the project. And I, like the rest of my commissioners, have some significant concerns with the, with the current proposal. As I've been sitting up here, I've been trying to think of, we see parcels that are phased. What was, what is it that could make this parcel stand on its own two feet? And I think Mr. Fishman hit some of the, the circulation, that, that's a big concern. We lost a lot of the feel of the parcel with the oncology garden deletion. We lost a lot of the feel. Obviously, the building is important, but this building is beautiful. It is well designed, it is well articulated, it is featured from different angles, it, it is contemplated and it's thoughtful, but it does look incomplete. The ribbon that we worked very hard on together kind of lost a little bit of its identity. And the staff green area that kind of tied through all of that open space also was deleted. So essentially, we're looking at a building that is, is complementary and is kind of framed very well on one side, has a little bit of introduction with the Bright Road entrance and then has a void. And while I also echo the, the Sawmill discomfort, I'm stuck because we're developing a parcel and we're not doing the pedestrian connectivity. And I understand that, that there will be pedestrian access to this parcel coming from Bright Road and that may be where people walk, that may be where people cycle. But there's still pedestrians walking on Sawmill. And so we have to look from a planning perspective, as parcels are developed, how do we want them developed? And we want them to develop contemplating connectivity and contemplating future plans. So for me, part of the sticking points for this plan to stand on its own two legs, I would have to see significant improvement on the Sawmill side. I'd have to see landscaping addition around the eastern side of the hospital. I'd have to see improvement on the ribbon. And then the no mow is sticking. It's still part of the parcel. It's right there in the middle between the Bright Road connectivity in the building, so it's going to be a focal point and we would have to see some improvement in that area. So while I wish I could say, if you do, you know, we add condition number 15 and 16, we could move forward with an approval, I don't think we're there. I think that we took a couple of step back, steps backward from where we were with our original preliminary plat. And, you know, I, I think that there are solutions. I think the phased AFDP, second AFDP is a possibility. And I think you heard that from a lot of the commissioners tonight, that they're willing to work with you on making something. And we want, we want the hospital here. I mean, it's beautiful. If it had the features of the FDP that was approved, you had our blessing, you had our, you know, congratulations and hope for you being an official partner of the city of Dublin in this location. Unfortunately, tonight, I think what you're hearing is we're not there with this one. So with that being said, I'd like to ask if you seek any clarity on the commission's discussion before I, I ask if you would like us to move forward with a vote tonight or if you would like to table this and come back with a different application. Thank you.
Sorry, just a clarifying question. If we table the amended plan, does the previous final development plan still hold?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Hello. We would like to request to table your decision.
Okay, thank you. So I, I have received a request from the applicant to table tonight's, tonight's application. So looking for. So looking for a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Chinok.
Yes.
Ms. Harder.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I, I certainly appreciate how much effort went into this. I know that it wasn't an easy process and it's not what you wanted to hear tonight. I hope that we can see you back as an application comes forward or construction begins. And regardless, we'd love to see Mount Carmel within the city of Dublin. So thank you for your time.
Can I, can I ask a question? If, if, if they, would we be willing to vote for a special meeting if they can come back very quickly just to hear this so we don't hold them up?
So, so the question was, would the commission be willing to hold a special meeting if you had a separate application or a different application to come back so that we would, didn't hold up the application process? I saw at least three head nods. I'm looking for one more. So we, we saw four. So the request was essentially, could, could we do this a little faster if a different application comes beforeward? And we absolutely would be willing and, and considerate of that.
As scheduled, we have one more meeting left in October, one in November and one in December. So of course, if, if the circumstances arise where the applicant would want to come back, hopefully we'd be able to accommodate a special meeting in those time periods.
Thank you, Mr. Box. All right. And that was our last normal agenda item. We will move on to communications. So Ms. Roush, I will turn some time over to you.
I do not have anything further to share.
All right. Looking to the commission, any items for communication? Well, we thank you all. We know that those are not our, our favorite applications as we don't get across the finish line. And so I appreciate all of your time, all of your homework, your due diligence in looking at the orange binder worth of material.
Quick, quick request, Jenny, maybe Jenny and Thad, that question that I was asking, we should probably understand it foundationally. Because I, I still don't, I still think they have exactly what they need relative to the, that we don't have to see the phasing relative to building permit is my point. They can do that relative to the next step that keeps them moving forward. But then the timeline and duration and finiteness of all those things, I think, is probably important.
But they might, they might not want to ever build this.
Agreed, agreed. But I, I think from ours, from ours, we just have to, like, we have to understand, I think, some of those nuts and bolts of the process and, right, where the, where the durations are pretty well. And I, I don't know that we did when we were ready to question.
All right. Any final conversation this evening? Ladies and gentlemen, pass dismissed. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.